Good. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
We will call it a fall order. The Citrus zoning board of appeals Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four hearing. So at select board hearing in town hall. Citrus zoning board of appeals committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community among all participants, including marginalized and minority communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all participating committee to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is being recorded and streamed via Facebook. This meeting is being held live in the hearing room and via Zoom. Their telephone and computer access are on the town website. With that, we will call the first application of Kathleen M. Driscoll, Revital Trust, fifty one Patricia Drive, Milton, Mass. Requesting special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty, section six, and section eight, ten of Citrus zoning bylaws and or any other relief of the board of appeals may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a dwelling located in Timothy Avenue Road, Citrus, Mass, oh two oh six six. Ken.
Yes.
Chris, can you just hit that where it's like, got it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have someone here in the room on that application or on Zoom?
Mr. X, if they're on Zoom, we need you to raise your hand if you were here for that, that application. Yes.
There we go. iPhone five, Sally is here on that application.
Let us find out. Ms. Driscoll, you can go ahead, unmute yourself. Ms. Driscoll, there you go.
Yes. Good evening. Yes, this is Sally Driscoll. How are you?
Hello, how are you, Ms. Driscoll?
Good. Um, no, I cannot. I actually have a structural engineer and my general contractor who are also on. John Paulstrom and Bob Rego, who are the experts. Gentlemen.
Uh, Ms. Driscoll, can you just say their names again for me one more time?
Yes, John Paulstrom and Bob Rego.
I do see Bob. I do not see John. We're gonna make, uh, Bob there, John, uh, I'm sorry, John, if you were, Jonathan, if you're Jonathan's iPad. Just raise your hand if you're Jonathan. How about that?
And the raised hand is reaction button and then the raised hand.
Yes, yes, John, if you're not familiar with that. Move your, uh, mouse down to that bottom. You'll see a reaction. Just raise your hand if you can. Ms. Driscoll, do you know if he is?
Um, I believe that is his iPad. Jonathan's iPad.
Let's find out. Jonathan, if.
Hello.
Yes, Jonathan, is that, is that?
That, that is me.
Fantastic.
Okay, I'm back there, sir. Name, again, name and address for the record and can we run us through this post project?
Okay, um, for the record, my name's Bob Rego. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, Riverhawk Land Survey. Um, we're the civil engineers and the surveyors for the project. Um, so we put together this site plan and, uh, did the, did the land survey. We're here tonight to ask for a special permit. There's an existing structure. Um, located on the property, the current, uh, subject lot is, um, non-conforming, um, in terms of area and, um, it also for front and side yard setbacks. So we're looking for, uh, to, uh, raise the existing structure on the property and build a new, uh, two, uh, two-story dwelling that, uh, is slightly more conforming than what's currently on the property now. Um, we're still, uh, front yard setback. We're still a little, um, short on what's required but consistent with neighboring properties. And, um, we've met the, uh, two side yard setbacks and the rear setback with the proposed, um, layout.
Um, did you, have you done a calculation as to the average, uh, front yard setbacks, uh, in the neighborhood?
Uh, we, we, we have not, but, um, the existing front yard setback is fourteen point one feet and we're proposing twenty. Uh, this goes a little bit.
Twenty point two.
Twenty point two feet.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, Bob, turn to you first.
No, I would have asked the same question. It's possible this does be, it was only by law requirement when you take into account that exception. But, uh, even still, it's, you know, still a better situation than exists now.
Great.
Um, the other thing I'd comment on, I'm sure, but the applicant knows this would need to go before the historical commission, because it's over a hundred years old.
Right.
Uh, so before it can be demolished, we, uh, their, their approval.
Um, board, any preliminary question?
No questions, but I'm looking at the map and bringing the fact that sixteen is actually bringing them behind the other houses.
In all, in all likelihood, both were bringing them behind the average, right? Yeah. Um, anybody in the room? Would like to comment? Thank you. Anybody? So nobody in the room? Um, anybody online?
No.
Board, one more time on this one. I think this is pretty. If you're forward, anybody would like to make a comment?
On the first application, I think, which was on the first application of Catherine and Milton, Revital Trust, a quote described Milton. Request is special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, check section eight, ten, and it's by law. And relief of the board, because they grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of dwelling located at Timothy Avenue Road, Citrus. In accordance with plan, uh, Riverhawk Environmental dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. And the board finds that such raise and rebuild does not create any non-conformities. And to the extent that it intensifies the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
None? Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. I, I apologize here. You did have a hand raised the last minute from Ms. Hennessy, but, uh, but she.
I apologize.
Now there's another hand up.
That's.
Okay, uh, we already voted. Mr. Thompson, is your hand up for this, for the one that we just voted on or for?
Yes, I was trying to raise my hand while you were voting.
Okay. Uh, I, we apologize that we didn't see it.
Yes.
Um, happy to, happy to take the quick comment now.
Yes, I am, I am the rear butter of, uh, this house. Uh, does the, does the, uh, setback on the front mean that, uh, it's gonna violate a setback issue in the back? And if so, how, how many feet is that?
Yeah, so the answer to your question. Let me look at this again. Is that, um, the rear yard setback is by, uh, the zoning code is twenty feet. Um, it is currently forty one point six feet. The proposal is thirty six point nine, which is within, uh, the setback requirements. So no, it does not violate anything.
Thank you.
Happy we can answer the question. Um, all right.
All right.
All right, you're correct.
Thank you.
All right, so that's our first application. We will now call the second application of, uh, Kathleen Clarity, two oh five Havelley Road, Citrus, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty eight, section six and section eight, ten, point two of Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief of the board of appeals may grant to a town addition of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at two oh five Havelley Road, Citrus, Mass.
Yes.
Oh, two oh six. Yes, uh, oh, we don't have one there. Yes, you may. I can get it, but metaphor is. It's been here. So, yeah. Name and address for the record. Yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. For the record, James Garfield, registered engineer with Morse Engineering. Here tonight representing the applicant. Two oh five Havelley Road, special permit slash finding for MGL chapter forty eight, section six, in Citrus zoning bylaw. Section eight, ten, point two, to allow in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. This site is located in the R three zoning district. The existing home is twelve hundred and thirty-two square feet, built in nineteen fifty-nine per the assessors card. The, uh, existing structure is non-conforming in regards to the front yard setback to J Road. That setback requirement was calculated using the average front yard setback, which we show on our plan. Uh, that was calculated to be twenty six point nine feet required. And there is an existing twenty-five point two feet, uh, along J Road for the front yard setback. So this new addition is on the opposite side of the building from that setback. It, uh, is fully compliant with all zoning setbacks and results in a thirty-one point five percent increase in gross floor area. Um, we feel the board can issue the requested relief because the, uh, addition to a single-family dwelling isn't allowed use within the district. The addition complies with all zoning setbacks and we are not proposing any change to the existing non-conformity. So with that, I'll pass it back to the board.
Okay. Board of questions on this one? Uh, Bob?
Nothing.
Okay. I will take a beat. Anybody in the room? Going once, going twice? Anybody online for this?
No, I'll keep watching. It's done.
Going once? Going twice? Oh, they're trying to be helpful, uh, and it's difficult. So, um, um, anything more? Board had any additional questions on this? This looks, yeah, I mean, this looks pretty straightforward. Um.
I mean, make a motion on the second, second application of Kathleen Clarity, two oh five Havelley Road. Request special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six and section eight, ten, point two of Citrus bylaw. And relief of the board, they grant to allow the addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at two oh five Havelley Road. Citrus, present in working hearing dated March eleventh, twenty twenty four. And the board finds that such, uh, addition does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent that it intensifies the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Granted. Thank you. Would you be able to help with this one?
Thank you.
All right.
If somebody did personally.
I do.
All right, so on the, we will now call third application of Timothy and Kristen Mooney, six Rebecca Road, Citrus, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six and sections eight, ten, point two and four seventy, point six F of Citrus bylaw and any other relief of the board of appeals may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The property is located at six Rebecca Road, Citrus, H two oh six six.
Yep.
One more time, name and address for the record.
For the record, James Garfield with Morse Engineering. He represented the applicant, uh, six Rebecca Road. This is a special permit slash finding for MGL chapter forty eight, section six in Citrus zoning bylaw, section eight, ten, point two, and four seventy, point six F. To allow a recent rebuild of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Um, this property is located within the R three zoning district. The existing home is fifteen hundred and sixty square feet in size, built in nineteen thirty per the assessors card. Existing lot is non-conforming in regards to frontage, lot area, and lot width. The existing structure is non-conforming in regards to front yard, rear yard, and side yard setbacks. This existing structure is also non FEMA compliant. So we are proposing a new single-family dwelling, which will improve both the front yard and left side yard setbacks. Um, the new home is proposed as twenty-six hundred square feet, resulting in a sixty-seven percent increase in gross floor area. And this new home will also be brought in FEMA compliance. Uh, we feel the board can issue the requested relief because single-family homes are in allowed use within this district. The reason rebuild improves to existing non-conformities and other homes of similar size are found throughout the R three district as well as close vicinity of this property. So with that, we'll pass it back to the board for questions.
I'm just. And these are perfect pictures of the home at the stand today.
Correct. Up top are the current pic photos and then the, uh, front elevation that would be the proposed, so.
Got it. Board. We'll come back to the board. Bob?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. It's a little hard to read the drawing. Um, obviously the house stands out clearly enough, but the porch is an overhead. To me, they're a little bit, um, obscure. And I guess the question I've got mainly is the corner of the porch. As I, as I look at plan on Rebecca Road, towards the west. Um, if that's a covered porch, counts as part of the house, um, by the zoning definition. And I'm wondering if that's counted for when you're talking about front yard setbacks. It looks very close.
Bob, if you wouldn't mind, you want to just clarify where you think?
Yeah. Porch.
Yep.
Porch. Interception point with the two porches right there. All right, to the property line, so.
Yeah, well, we might, I know we, we delineated this within our zoning chart here in the application.
Yeah.
And we broke it down based on house and porch, uh, because of that fact that, like, it's kind of hard to read. Um, so if you'd like, I mean, I could go down the list of the house and porch.
No, I don't, I don't have a specific, um, issue with it. I just, um, yeah, it's, it would like, would like to make the record show that a covered porch counts the same as what you're calling a house when you're speaking about setbacks.
That's correct.
And, and would you like to make that clear? That they, from the zoning chart, the zoning chart seems to match what is in the plan. They have a front yard setback listed in the proposed plan of three point nine. And they delineated, uh, in the zoning chart, the house is eight point two, but the porch is three point nine. Okay. So that seems to be consistent.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I may be reading the wrong one. I think I'm reading the existing house as opposed, as opposed to the, uh.
Well, he did the zoning chart in the application also with all the rest of the details.
Right, no, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I read it too.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other question I'd have was, uh, would not question comment. I'd weigh anything within five feet of the property line, um, is subject to fire spread restrictions. And this is an interesting one because the house, the house isn't. So you're not looking at a firewall and limited, uh, window openings, for example. But the porch deck is within that zone. So it may be, and I'm gonna look this up, that that instruction has to be a fire retardant or fire resistant treated materials. We'll find out. Just an interesting situation.
Right. And again, not. Not per, not per form of building, probably talking right here, just so that everybody understands what we're talking about. I'll turn to people in the room. Nobody in the room can miss case. Okay, if you're gonna go online. Listen, can you put up the people online? So we can see. Box number, right?
Set a stop share.
Yeah, you're gonna have to stop sharing.
Uh, Mr. X, you have no hands raised, just so you're aware.
Right, so we have, thank you, sir. No hands raised? Going once? Going twice? Board? All right, um.
Like serious issues of safety, aren't you?
Okay. Get through them. All right, um, anybody else want to make a motion?
I'm on a roll right now.
You're on a roll? All right, go for it. You're doing great.
Make a motion on the third application, Timothy Kristen Mooney, six Rebecca Road. Request special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two, two four seventy, point six, tax, file off. And I am the relief of the board, appeals may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at six Rebecca Avenue Road. Per the plan, the walking hearing dated March eleventh, twenty twenty four. The board finds that such raise and rebuild does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent that it intensifies the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
For the record, thank you.
I'll do that.
You got it? No, are you here on number three? We would like to, we line them up properly.
I'll be here for the file, so.
Good to have. Um, all right, on the fourth application, uh, of Brett, uh, Brett Kamara Preziosi. Uh, fifty Bannell Drive, Pembroke, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance, uh, with MGL forty eight, section six and section eight, point two of Citrus zoning bylaws and or any other relief of the board of appeals may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Property located at fifty eight slash sixty Tilden Road, Citrus, Mass.
So again, for the record, James Garfield with Morse Engineering. Here tonight representing the applicant at fifty eight dash sixty Tilden Roads. Uh, this is for a special permit slash finding for MGL chapter forty eight, section six and the Citrus zoning bylaw, section eight, eight, ten, point two. To allow raise and rebuild of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Uh, this is located within the R two zoning district. The existing home is eighteen hundred and nineteen square feet, built in eighteen fifty per the assessors card. Uh, the existing lot is non-conforming in regards to lot width. And the existing structure is non-conforming in regards to front yard setback. The new single-family dwelling will improve the lot width. Uh, the existing lot width is ninety-five point seven feet and we are proposing a hundred and six point four feet. And we are also proposing to, uh, completely eliminate the front yard setback non-conformity. Uh, the new home will be twenty-six hundred square feet, resulting in a forty-two point nine percent increase in gross floor area. Uh, we feel the board can issue the requested relief because the single-family home isn't allowed use within the district. Um, the reason rebuild is improving one non-conformity, completely eliminating another. And other homes of similar size are found throughout the R two districts and within close vicinity of this project. So with that, I will turn it back to the board.
So, hold on. Uh, all right, so frontage, we're conforming, the lot is double size, for the independent use. It was R two, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but there is an existing two-family dwelling. That makes sense. So lot, lot, all right, frontage. Your frontage. Lot width, your we are now going to be, are, uh, a little bit better, but the width will not conform because of where the house was situated. And as far as the setbacks go. We're conforming all the way down, right?
That's correct.
Respectful setbacks. Board? Bob?
Uh, no, do I understand that it's now, it's now categorized as a two-family dwelling and it's going to become a one-family dwelling?
That is correct.
No, nothing else. It will lead to historical society reviews.
Uh, anybody in the room? Anybody online?
No.
All right. Three. Two. One.
My screen's a lot crazy.
You, uh, you have no hands raised on, uh, I'm sorry, I take that back. Uh, yes, you do.
Right.
Mr., uh, camera.
One.
Yep. Go ahead.
Sorry, can you be okay?
Yes, yes, name, address, and just go ahead with your comment.
Sure, uh, this is Brett Kamara Preziosi and I'm the applicant for the fifty-eight sixty Tilden. Uh, I just wanted to let you know the Historical Society already approved, uh, demolition on the property back in August.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good to know. All right, board?
Question on D, I don't know if you guys. Uh, and this is probably just clarification for us. Plan and list of fifty-two fifty-six, how's this getting written off as add less fifteen slash sixty?
Oh, that's actually just a procedural, so it doesn't impact what we're doing, uh, but because it's, yeah, it's a good question. So what do we, what, uh, because it's never happened to me, we, we've converted a two-family to a one-family, right? We're gonna have a single address. So is this gonna be? I'll turn it over to the engineer. Do we know if this is gonna be fifty-eight or sixty?
I don't know the answer to that. Uh, that'd probably be a question for the assessors department.
Uh, all right, we'll write about this fifty-eight slash sixty. Uh, and then it will be, you know, to be determined as to what the, it's either gonna be one or the other. Um, okay. One more? You feel good?
Make a motion on the fourth application, Brett Kamara Preziosi, fifteen Bannell Drive, Pembroke. Request special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two of Citrus bylaw. And the relief of the board may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at fifty-eight dash sixty Tilden Road. Citrus, per the plan, one second hearing dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-three. That works. Will it be great? Is it gonna plan one twenty-three?
No, I'm sorry, I'll.
You're definitely cutting on the plan.
Just jacking. Not sure. Um, we, we should update that, I believe. I, I, I would think that would be twenty twenty-four. Uh, can we get you guys a new copy?
Yeah, for the record, so as, as the plan as submitted, um, that is dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Possibly incorrectly, updated plan will be submitted for the record. All right.
And the board finds that in any sense, raise and rebuild does not create any new non-conformities to the extent that it intensifies the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the two-family.
I second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Again, very easy. Um, Mr. Preziosi, good luck with your draft. That's all right. Um, all right, with respect to the fifth application of Richard McLaury, fifty-four Manlock Road, Citrus. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, section eight, ten, point two of Citrus bylaw. And or any other relief of the board of appeals may grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming garage associated with a single-family dwelling. The property is located at fifty-four Manlock Road, Citrus.
Again, for the record, James Garfield with Morse Engineering. Here tonight representing the applicant at fifty-four Main Law Road. It's a special permit slash finding for MGL chapter forty eight, second, second six, in Citrus zoning bylaw, section eight, ten, point two. To allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming garage associated with a single-family dwelling. This is within the R two zoning district. The existing home was built in nineteen twenty-seven per the assessors card. Uh, the existing lot is non-conforming in regards to lot area, frontage, and lot width. The existing structures are non-conforming with regards to side yard setbacks. Um, the reason rebuild, uh, so again, we are proposing a reason rebuild of a, of the, uh, detached garage. And that rebuild will be done entirely within the existing footprint of a garage that's there today. Uh, just for some reference, uh, the existing garage is six hundred square feet and its footprint will zero living space. We are now proposing the same footprint, six hundred square feet with four hundred square feet of finished space. Um, which is a hundred percent increase in gross floor area of the accessory building. Um, we feel the board can issue the request of relief because detached structures aren't allowed to use accessory, single-family homes within the district. And no change to the existing non-conformities is proposed. So we'll pass it back to the board for any questions.
Uh, yes, I'm sure I have a couple of questions. Um, I, so is this seeking approvals of accessory dwelling or merely as an accessory building?
It's not an accessory dwell.
What are you guys proposing to be on second floor?
Yeah, so it's gonna be one and a half stories. It's gonna be a home office within the dormer of a roof line.
Plumbing?
Don't think so.
Uh, board initially? Bob?
Uh, do you know if the intent is to reuse the existing foundation or to dig into one?
I don't know what the intent is. I'd have to check in with the architect on that front. Um, I mean, I would be going to guess if the existing slab is in good structural condition, they may reuse it. Um, otherwise, I have to defer again to the architect.
Yeah. Um, at some point. Yeah. Um, at some point, the Conservation Commission will want to uh weigh in on this, depending on what exactly the intent is. Within the fifty-foot buffer zone, um, as you know, is a restricted area, so admittedly, it's an existing situation that you're replicating, so that, that may, uh, that, that may be fine, but simply I'll keep my way on it. Other than that, nothing.
Uh, any, anybody in the room? Anybody online?
Apparently not.
On once? On twice? Well, in what in terms of difficulty, it's really going to be a very opportunity.
I know, for some reason, I have not had this kind of a screen up before and it's not allowing me to share my graphics or to get out of that and I'm too afraid to touch it and get it and blow it all.
That's okay. Uh, so if nobody's.
Uh, no, no reason to be afraid, Ms. Howie and Mr. Professor X, you have no hands raised.
Yay.
Thank you so much. All right, um, board, last chance for comment. One more?
He's got two.
Yeah.
On the fifth application, I make motion on the fifth application of Richard McLaury, uh, fifty four Manlock Road, situated requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty eight, section six, section eight, ten, point two, situated by law, and a relief of ordinary grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming garage associated with a single-family dwelling located at fifty four Manlock Road, situated for the plan of Morse Engineering dated March fifteen, twenty twenty four. The board finds such reason reconstructed is not creating new non-conformities in the extent that testifies in existing non-conformities, such a testification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Granted. Thank you. Uh, last one for you?
Yep.
Okay. So on the sixth application of Antonio G. Elena, Polina, sixty five Gilson Road, situated requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two, situated by laws and or any relief of border building grant to allow an addition of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The property is located at Gilson Road, situated in Mass, O two O six six.
Again, for the record, Jake Garfield, engineer with Morse Engineering, uh, representing the applicant at sixty five Gilson Road for a special permit slash finding for MGL chapter forty eight, section six, and situated zoning by law, section eight, ten, point two, to allow an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Uh, this is located within the R three district, the existing home is fifteen hundred and forty-six square feet, built in nineteen eighty-seven for the assessors card. The existing lot is non-conforming in regards to lot width, lot frontage, the existing structure is non-conforming in regards to side yard setback. Um, the new addition to the single-family dwelling will increase the gross floor area by ninety-seven percent, bringing the total to three thousand and forty-six square feet. We feel that the board can issue a request of relief because the addition to the single-family dwelling is not allowed use within the district and uh homes of this size are found throughout the R three district as well as close vicinity of this project. So with that, I will pass it back to the board for questions.
So you're bumping this up a front?
Uh, towards a front, yeah.
Towards a front.
Yeah.
Going into the driveway.
Uh, slightly, yes. I think part, about half of it is going into the, the driveway there, the gravel driveway.
What are the, uh, what are the dimensions on that?
The addition.
The addition here, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to guess.
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting shit block, right? It would kind of.
Roughly twenty-five by twenty-five.
More of a general comment than anything else, but if you were going to an eight-foot setback on that call on the right side, I would think there would be a question.
Um, well, I know we're matching the right sides existing, et cetera, the seven point, um, so that's, yeah, so we're not creating any more of a non-conformity, um, if that's your question.
Well, if, if that's.
Is, is it, is it a neighbor?
Well, arguably, it's an intensification. Right, because it's an existing non-conformity, it's not conforming on that one. You're now intensifying that because you're further extending it, right, in a not, in a conforming manner this way, but it's not.
I think we've got it pop up before though, the term that's not that existing.
Correct.
Of an existing.
There are, there are interest of interpretation of the opposite. Arguing. Yes, so there, I think it's up for debate. I think it's two inches, there's too much difference.
Right. Uh, that doesn't, yeah, it doesn't look as.
It looks worse.
Um, Bob?
Uh, no, I don't really have any problem with it. Uh, I'm curious as to where the V zone is on the property. Looking at the rate, it seems hard to imagine. I guess there's a small possibility built back right at the Atlantic Ocean line, a little bit of this maybe into the V I T zone. But no, that's another, how many are near the house?
Uh, anybody in the room? Yes, sir. Please tell me I'm the applicant, just wanted to just miss out. Okay, thank you. Um, anybody online?
We have no hands raised online.
All right.
Long division?
You're rolling?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. X, I apologize, we do have a hand raised. Uh, yes, yes. Uh, Miss Jackie, just the name, address, and go ahead with your comment, question.
I guess co-applicant, uh, Jacqueline Piscatello.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh.
All right, make a motion on the sixth application of Antonio G. Elena, sixty five Gilson Road, situated in Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, section eight, ten, point two, situated by law, and a relief of ordinary grant to allow the addition of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located at sixty five Gilson Road, situated in Mass. Current plan of Morse Engineering dated uh, March twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Eighty-three, point, point, you're gonna rise.
The board finds such, um, addition does not create any new non-conformities in the extent that testifies in existing non-conformities, such a testification is not potentially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Pretty drop today, pretty much, yeah. Uh, applicants, good luck with your project. All right, we will call our seventh and final application. Um, have continued from December twenty third, twenty twenty three of Catherine, twenty six, San Polas, situated in Mass, seeking waiver by special permit and refining for situated zoning by law, section eight, ten, from one of the four-year abandoned and or non-lease period of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a pre-existing non-conforming lot at two twenty-six, San Polas, situated in Mass, uh, that has been damaged with the fire in twenty twelve, and finding for situated zoning by law, section eight, twenty-one, according to MGL forty eight, section six, to allow proposed repair, restoration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to said non-conforming structure that will not be subject to permanent maintenance, uh, than just a non-conforming structure. Name and address for the record.
Jeff Delisi, McCormick Delisi and Harris, I'm gonna have the applicant.
Delisi, walk the book to the end.
Good to see you. I probably should ask the other guy to come back. He seems to have a lot. So, five applications in thirty-five minutes, pretty good.
Same engineer?
Same engineer. All right. Right, uh, all right, we have technically not, this question was asked internally, uh, closed the public commentary period on this. Last time, I took a quick look at my notes and, as we were prepared, uh, so it's technically still open. Um, so Lucy, do you want to make some initial comments that we can reopen the public commentary period for a brief amount of time? Hopefully, it won't take too long because there are not that many people online or in the room. Um, and then we can, uh, hopefully wrap this up if we are another. Is that accepted here?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Okay, so the last time I was here was way back in December.
Yep.
And, uh, uh, I was hoping that in this period of time, this four-month period of time, that the board will have had an opportunity to consider a few other applications under this provision, which is relatively new provision, which it has. I wanted to make sure that Turner Road matter in particular was, was, uh, vetted. Uh, so just to summarize, okay, so this was a non-conforming, uh, uh, a non-conforming structure, meaning a house built in the nineteen forties in a residential zone on a non-conforming lot. Um, the non-conforming was on the north of the side yard. The proposal was to build a home that eliminates that non-conformity entirely. Uh, as you indicated, George, in the reading of the application, the house, uh, that had been on the property had burned. Um, I think it was about ten or twelve years ago.
Yeah, you, you, in your letter, so it burned down in twenty twelve.
Yep, okay. So, uh, the foundation of that home remained until about two thousand and sixteen and all this information was at the prior bearing. Um, and then in twenty twenty-two, the bylaw was amended, uh, and that amendment was to provide that non-conforming uses and structures may continue, though not the conformity of the provisions of the bylaw for a period of, uh, unless or until abandoned or not used for a period of four years or more. Uh, the bylaw had also been amended, uh, just to allow ZDA by finding to waive the time provision and the concept behind the changes was basically to enumerate circumstances where property owners felt compelled to keep a dilapidated structure on a lot so as to avoid losing the non-conformity. So the concept was to encourage folks to clean up their property and remove the light. So in this case, after the bylaw was amended, what remained of the foundation, which was a small amount, was removed. There's a large hole on the property, uh, that had been there since the fire and that hole was filled in and recreated over. The issue, uh, before this board is not whether the non-conforming user structure was abandoned or not used for years or more, and that's the epiphany that I'd had, I believe, in the hearing. The issue is, is whether this board sees fit to issue a waiver of the four-year period, um, because that's really what we're talking about. So in this case, the expiration of four years was, um, occurred within a few months prior to, to COVID pandemic. Uh, then there was a tolling of permit time frames for a couple of years during state's emergency. Uh, back in September, this board issued a finding to waive a four-year period on a property at thirty-eight Holly Road, which had a home on a non-conforming lot that burned not twelve or thirteen years ago, but twenty years ago. The house was not lived in and was not rebuilt within the four-year timeframe. Or what, what this board did was not really focused on abandonment or non-use, but focused on whether it was appropriate to grant a waiver. Uh, for the sake of consistency, we're asking for the same relief. So we recognize also, as I indicated when I started, that, uh, the board voted to deny waiving the timeframe for the Turner Road property that had been basically, uh, demolished in the storm of seventy-eight. The reason why, uh, well, I indicated the reason why we requested it continued so you can hear that matter and understand the differences in circumstances. So in this case, the differences in the circumstances, our client purchased the property in twenty twenty for substantial consideration over four hundred thousand dollars. The land, uh, land, uh, had been assessed, I remind the board, all, you know, since the fire as a billable lot and it's assessed as a billable lot for today, facts were made on that basis. Uh, my client, I believe, is entitled to rely on a municipal determination that the property is assessed as a billable lot. Uh, there's still accessory structure on this property and the land, uh, continues to be used for residential purposes. It's been cleaned up and landscaped in a residential neighborhood. So in the other situation, in the Turner Road scenario, and I'm, I'm trying to draw a con, a contrast here because I do think that even though every case is to be determined on its own merit, I understand that the board is always concerned about creating a process. And, um, in that circumstance, that property was reassessed. It was reassessed as a non-billable lot. Uh, there was no accessory structure and there is no evidence or evidence presented that it had been since used for residential purposes. So in our situation, one of the other things that I thought is vital for me to remind the board is it can, is, uh, and, and a reason why I believe that the four-year timeframe ought to be, uh, granted or waived is because, uh, there are circumstances that explain why the house was not built or rebuilt within four years. And those circumstances don't exist on the Turner Road property and they weren't stated to exist even in the Holly Road property. Here, after the fire, the prior owner, uh, was, uh, testified at the last, last meeting, uh, somebody came forward and indicated that he had had a, uh, a breakdown, mental breakdown, and that he was, uh, uh, put into a rehabilitation facility uh, as an alternative living rent. So there's a trauma that he suffered as a result of this particular incident that burned his house. And, uh, I would think that when somebody is in a institution, the last thing that's on their mind that they're even competent to determine issues concerning property is a ticking zoning timeframe. And yes, there was insurance money that was used. That insurance money was used to pay for his living situation, medical bills. And eventually, a guardianship was obtained, the property was sold to my clients based on a billable lot and that money was used to pay for his medical circumstances, his living rent. None of the circumstances that I'm indicating to you today, which were indicated to you in December, existed in the Turner Road property, the Holly Road property, or in any of these cases that Chris just gave me. Um, so I guess what I want to say is that I, I, I don't, I, you know, hopefully, the board has had an opportunity to kind of chill out about this provision, think about it a little bit, uh, not worry about, you know, it going out into perpetuity because the whole point is that this town has given this board the authority in certain circumstances, whatever those circumstances are, to waive the timeframe so that a house may be rebuilt. It's not whether there was an abandonment four years or more, it's whether, uh, it's whether there are circumstances that warrant making that timeframe. And that's really kind of what I wanted to focus on. I think that we laid those out. I don't think that there are gonna be now these circumstances, uh, that seem to be special and unique to this circumstance. So, um, when I got here tonight, Chris handed me a couple of cases, um, and, uh, just kind of looking at the cases, which I happen to notice were found on, uh, Mass Law's Weekly, I'm shocked that you're.
It was a quick Google search.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's one case in one.
Yeah, so basically, the key here is that, that all these cases deal with their own factual circumstances and their own legal circumstances. And I'll start with legal circumstances. What I mean by that is. and their own legal circumstances. And I'll start with the legal circumstances. What I mean by that is as a zoning lawyer, when I am presented with a case, whether it be in this town or any other town that I work in, the first thing I do is I pick up the zoning bylaw, and I look to see what the zoning bylaw says in that particular town. Because every particular town has different, different language. What distinguishes the town of Situate versus the two circumstances here are the fact that in Situate, we have adopted a zoning bylaw that does grant this court the authority to waive the timeframe. So these cases deal with intention to abandon and what circumstances might exist to to allow a town to validly make its determination that somebody has intended to abandon their property. In either one of these circumstances are there a local bylaw provision at play that allows a waiver of that. But in neither one of these circumstances are the circumstances at play that we've been dealing with the last few years, whether that be COVID, whether that be assessing property as billable lot and paying taxes and continuing to pay taxes, billable lot. Neither one of these cases that I see have a partial foundation that existed for a period of time or a competency question involving somebody who's gone off into an institution. And so I think that the differences are in the facts. I think the differences are in the law. And it just kind of reaffirms for me why this is a special case and not to be given that consideration.
Thank you. You are very thorough. I think you've made your case very, very clear. So I'm going to leave it up to the remaining. I'm going to do a final public commentary, right? Because we didn't technically close it. I'm going to turn it over, and then I will close public commentary. And then we'll be just whatever discussion the members of the board will be part of. So anybody in the room that wants to comment? Anybody online?
There's currently no one online that wants to speak.
Five, four, three, two, one. So I'm going to officially close the public commentary period. Okay, so that, at least that period is done. Bob, you had conversations last time. Anything else that you would like to add?
I think the only thing that that follows with what attorney de Lees and the world points to say relative to the Turner Road property had the board, for whatever reason, decided to grant a special permit to Turner Road based on the language in 810. Turner Road, that was one hurdle that, let's say, Turner Road there was a second hurdle in section 47 of the bylaws that Turner Road was not negotiated. So I think that's a difference certainly worth considering. This property has no such difficulty with that particular provision of the bylaws.
I, I mean, I think I will speak my mind. To the board, to the fellow members of the board, I think you've made an appropriate case. That being, and I think the issue is whether we, as a board, believe this is a situation appropriate for a waiver of four-year period. I agree with your assessment. That is exactly the question. I have an opinion about this that centers around the fact that this burned down in 2012. Then there was nothing was done to the property other than basically cleaning it up, cleaning it up with parts and filling in the property till it was purchased during the visit by the applicants. And we are now in all of 2023, when you guys first brought this in front of us, 2026. And the property's been effectively an empty lot. Or if you don't go back to 2012, if you go back to, let's say, 2016, seven years plus. So I think that's what we have to look at as a board. And whether we believe that that is appropriate for, you know, a situation where there is no, fundamentally no construction, very little of it, you know, doesn't have any foundations and pylons on it currently. And that we approve the rebuilding of a house that hasn't existed before or today. So that's my opinion, of those nonconformity, the other members of the board.
I think it's worth considering that is it unique? And is it worth considering that a gentleman or the, the, the family that is pursuing this build is the adjacent, arguably something's going to be built in that they combine their lots, they go to a 900 square foot ADU that's compliant. So something's going to be built on this lot. So the question then becomes, is a 700 square foot delta between what they're likely going to be able to get permitted versus what they're showing here, both of which are confirming, conforming, correct?
Yes, except that there wouldn't necessarily be a limitation on square feet in a detached accessory building.
So to that point, because it's, if this was just a gentleman that lived, I found that lot was law, I do think there's some consideration to take note that the gentleman that's trying to get the waiver lives right here, and ultimately, something's going to be built there.
Right, and, and I understand what you're saying, but there's the difference between having this as a freestanding, freely saleable, transferable home, right, and an accessory dwelling, right? Which is, you know, we buy an empty piece of otherwise, otherwise non-billable property next to your home. Right? And if the, you know, intent of possibly building an accessory dwelling rather than a free-standing, you know, something where you couldn't build a home, a full home, that you could build an accessory dwelling. So again, the arguments about, you know, I think the way I view this is the applicants brought this with their eyes open. It is a property next door. They know they can do something with it. They can do something with it. Right? Question is whether we believe that this is appropriate to waive the four-year period and allow them to effectively build, rebuild what was there, effectively.
Well, this gives the opposite.
So in there lies the interesting part of this, because there's a distinction between a use and a structure, right? So we are talking about a residential zone in which a dwelling use is allowed as a right. Okay? So what, if we're really talking about a structure, essentially, we're going to be able to build a structure. It could have the same foundation. It could be bigger. It could be smaller. But there will be something there. So the whole concept of abandonment and nonuse, and whether you can grant a waiver, has to do with whether you're going to grant a waiver, not for a dwelling, but for a structure. And we're going to be able to do it anyway. And I guess what we want to do is use it for conforming use as opposed to another kind of conforming use, which is an accessory use. So it's something that I do want you to consider, because yeah, they bought this by the way open, and yeah, they looked at tax bills. Yeah, the tax bill said that this was buildable. And yeah, the tax, and yeah, the tax bill, you know, and they paid it. They continued to pay it. So that's just my kind of point there.
Fair point. Other members of the board? Bob, please. I, I may not have done my homework, maybe here, but they were worked, but I assume attorney de Lees said that these two properties are held in different names or under different titles. So the merger doctrine is not going to come into play.
Well, the merger doctrine comes into play when you're dealing with pre-reported residential lots of record, and when you're so what I mean by that, you guys don't often come across it because it's something that we deal with with Bob on. So chapter 48, section six, which governs zoning, basically says, if you have a lot that you seek to put a dwelling on, so long as it has a certain amount of minimal frontage and lot area, you can, you can do so in a, without having increases in zoning requirements apply. And that is in the circumstance where you have owned a lot or the lot was created on a record plan prior to the adoption of the zoning bylaw that would make it bill legal. And so merger comes into play when, when there are two lots that are held in common ownership. These statutes deals with whether it's held in common ownership with adjoining land. And so that's where merger comes in. I don't think that this merge, because when you look at merger, you deal with intention. And I can't remember, Bob, if it's in the same form of ownership, but I mean, it's something that I could address in a future memo to you. If necessary, I don't think it's relevant to the, the board at all.
Well, certainly, if the lot has merged already, then what you're talking about can now.
I agree. Yeah.
More?
No.
So, so this is, so what's, what's in front of us right now, and I think it's the right thing in front of us, which would be a finding, right, for a waiver of the four-year period first. If we find to waive the four-year period, right, then it's the special permit for the construction of, of this plant.
The finding of not substantially more detrimental.
Right, but I don't, don't you think so need a special permit?
No. So there's a, there's a distinction between a special permit and a finding. And the difference really is the number of votes between two votes out of the three voting out of the board, or three votes out of the board. Up until like 2014 or so, what, every single permit that came in front of you tonight would have been a special permit. Because the zoning bylaw said the board could grant this relief by granting a special permit. And then in 2012, the, the special permit concept was loosened, and it was made to be a finding under section 810. So what, the distinction I'm making to you is the relief that's in front of you that you're being requested to grant is the finding to grant a waiver.
Right.
And if granted, a finding of not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood to grant the reconstruction. Not a special permit, because we're not on a study plan.
I buy, I, I, I buy that. I buy that argument.
It's something that I've had to deal with other courts prior to you, and I think we've vetted it out pretty thoroughly.
No, I think that's right.
So the reason I printed this stuff, I did a quick search on abandoned versus nonuse. And this is discussion, the judge known as the state of this authorized, not required to define and regulate non-conforming uses and structures. Abandoned or not used for period of two years or more. We extend that to four, with the option to wait. Wait. Wherein, wherein, which is where this case came from, opted to regulate only uses abandoned or not used for a period of two years or more. Although the bylaw does not provide a time limit, which ours does, four years. By which time, although the bylaw does not provide a time limit, by which time a non-conforming structure must be reconstructed in order to avoid being considered abandoned in Dial Away, which I didn't get a chance to look up. Dial Away was another case. We concluded that an undersized lot did not maintain its protected character as a billable lot 23 years after a non-conforming dwelling on the lot was framed. The right to reconstruct the non-conforming dwelling had been abandoned as a matter of law. Just a matter of, you know, whether we decided it was four years or four years, you know, not, I can't say. We noted that the lapse in time, falling and demolition may, may be so significant that abandonment, probable, is confirmed as a matter of law. So that's kind of the crux of where I'm at, is the building burned down, it tore it down. There was a hole. I recall a hole, part of a foundation. The hole was a hole. So as of the amendment of A10-1 in 22, 22, no part of the structure exists.
There was, there was a portion. There was a portion inside the hall that was removed six months after they bought the property, which was 2021.
They bought, they bought the property in 2020, in October 2020.
No, I'm sorry, within six months of filing the zoning application. That's this six-month period.
When they filled in the calls.
Yeah, but they also removed a portion of a foundation that was in there on a lot that was noted to be buildable by the town. And we can get into the facts of this, but the, the distinction is, is that neither one of these cases have the ability to waive. These cases have their own back.
They're not, it's, that's not what it's talking about, though. It's talking about
It's talking about whether it's talking about whether it was determined to be abandoned as a result of the passage of time. Okay? Even if you determine that this lot was abandoned because of the passage of time, you still have the authority to grant a waiver.
My argument, not, wait, is this. My argument.
Okay, so you're, I, I
In that circumstance of 20-something years.
Right.
In the circumstance of the law.
I understand.
In the circumstance of the medical.
So part of the argument, why I don't want this. He did not give a turnover, the original owner who owned it when the house burned. Obviously, wasn't a home, you know, possible. These people bought the property, eyes wide.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand that
For value.
it was paying taxes or whatnot. It depends on the town. You know, but this, it's not a billable lot. I understand it.
So, all right, so, but I think you're, look, I think you're, you're, you framed the issue absolutely correctly. I think the question is, and I agree with you, we have the power to waive, right, before you, we agree it's past the four-year period, we reveal that to be a waiver situation. Situation if we believe that the, the facts in total, right, should, we should do that, right? Okay, so we have three members of the board, the board that are voting. We need two votes of for, for waiver. Right? We agree that that's the procedure, at least step one, right? I'll hold this, and I will hold the rest. We also wrote as a blocking case, there is, for example, future issues about whether somebody should recuse themselves or whatever. We, we just have a full, a full vote of the rest. I will hold the members, voting members, and then I will hold the non-voting members as well. Okay, as to the issue of waiver. right? Do you vote to waive the four-year period?
No.
I will say yes. I say no.
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
So two out of three say no? Period is not waived.
Okay, so since you guys haven't taken a full vote, because my client has asked me to also remind you that, uh, he was told by the insurance company to re-raid the property, remove the light that was on it. Uh, so in light of the fact that you have a straw ball with five members, three of whom would say yes, two of whom unfortunately, the voting members saying no, uh, just signal to me whether you're compelled to maybe consider or reconsider changing your no votes to yes. And if in light of the fact that we have three members that, uh, would vote yes, if that's the case, let me know and I'll let you know whether I wish to proceed.
In light of how the other.
No, I, I, I'm diggers enough to know that's why.
Think you're learning specific facts of this, but I understand.
Yeah, I, 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 I reread the record. I had looked at the videos. I'd looked through the facts. I think that the extended time period, um, the fact that there were fundamentally at the time of the purchase, no, uh, buyer current owners, no surprising circumstances. Um, and that, uh, you know, they, they held on to the property for over, uh, three and a half years before even uh, starting this process, uh, leads me to, uh, saying no. I started the waiver of the four-year period.
Okay, so I'll spare you all the vote and I'll request a, uh, withdraw without prejudice if the board would consider that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we'll, we'll move, um, we'll, uh, against the person with the drawl. I'm going to grant the withdrawal without prejudice. All set? All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
All right, uh, there being no other matters for us to catch some business. Um, first, uh, I'm new for the, um, for the people of January and February, twenty twenty-four minutes, that's submitted to the board. All those who, uh,
Second, second.
All of them, right? Elizabeth, January and February twenty twenty-four approved. Thank you very much. Uh, first, you had something else that you wanted to raise.
So in, in, you're talking about all of this zoning stuff. Uh, we started digging into the prospect books. Uh, the additions that are floating around there are second and third. Did we say we have a one?
This is on board.
Do you?
We have one for you.
Uh, but the current addition is the fifth and the sixth is coming out soon. And the members of the board are supposed to count a clock each.
I'm not sure that's written out of anywhere, but that is.
As big a custom.
Right. I, I have no copy. And as I am the most senior member of this board, I doubt that any other member of this board through the town has a copy. Other members may have for other reasons.
They don't, did you?
No.
I guess we talked about.
Oh, yes, it's all through the town.
No, no, through the town.
I would know it through, through the town.
Elizabeth, did you reach out to Anthony and Susan tonight or?
I did not, no. I was going to talk to Lorraine about it first because it's Janine's understanding or recollection that the books that were passed out, she's given maybe three and she leaves a key in the office, so.
All right.
Uh, we should have an up-to-date, at least one.
Right.
Up-to-date one, if, you know, if there were, you know, a clock for each of them going, none of us.
Right, and then once somebody steps down, there's a vote on them and they can pass on their.
Pass it on. Turn, turn it in until it gets passed.
Right, I think that, that makes sense. Um, I don't know that we need a motion for that, but I don't know.
No, I just discussed something that, you know, and there is some sort of question to this, right, board.
Yeah, no shame. Elizabeth, when they're researching that, can you find out what the former board members, um, what addition they were given?
They have.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know that Janine did, but I'll ask her again and then I'll sort it out.
Yeah, I think I did. I'm not sure I received one.
Well, I've never gotten.
I don't know if it's the fifth addition or not.
I had, you know, I was in the office and we had to say, yeah, take this.
The spine's all cracked on it.
Yeah.
I do not.
It's an interesting reading. I know you have, and you know, seen one. They're an interesting. They're an interesting read, uh, to go back and look, but like addition, the third addition that I have is open up to not have ale.
Yeah, this one does.
Right, um, so there was ale, and.
The fact that it's got a case that post.
Deed, right, so, yeah, so deed, uh, that's what this got.
Post, okay.
Right. Right, it's.
He had talked about deed, over, not overriding, but sort of.
Modified.
Add modified.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there was another case beyond that, which was one, he said deed wasn't as powerful as this seven was, right?
Well, I mean, again, it's case interpretation.
Yeah, what was that?
Welcome to practice law. Um, all right, I think that's a great idea. I think we should have at least three copies, um, that are up to date and or mostly up to date. Um, and, uh, and, and I think that's the right.
Something else that I wanted to touch on is, is when I'm, when I'm digging around finding stuff like this, do we have a problem? It's the length that knows the clock sets up. Do we have a problem with that being forwarded out to the community? So obviously, this was in regards to two twenty-six.
Correct.
But as long as we don't discuss it, it doesn't violate.
Correct, it becomes a part of the record, much like your commentary from Bob, a note from Bob or a memo from Bob.
I mean, granted, this, I found, I found this at five o'clock. I ran here with copies of it to pass it up tonight, but.
And, and everybody got it at the same time.
Having done it earlier, you've been able to pass it up to.
No, and one copy should go into the file.
Right.
Um, so I think that's, I think we're moving to public discussion. Any other issues? Maybe you have first?
Meeting ends?
Uh, we just approved the majority.
We stay there.
Yeah, we're guessing at this hour.
Can't say that.
Um, and those are being, we're different at the age.
Do we solidify who's doing what?
Yeah, I was gonna say, our lowest base.
Uh, Tom, these?
I have the first one. George has the second. Chris has the third.
Six, there's no opinion because there's a withdrawal. Fourth and fifth.
I'll take whichever one, someone else, someone else.
Four, they have votes.
I'll take the fourth.
You have taken the fifth?
We need, we need one more. Seven.
Oh, seven, first we found. Fourth, fifth, so somebody needs to use six.
I'll take the sixth.
Okay.
Two, three.
Five and six.
Again, five and six or five?
Who's gonna take six and just to take five, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And who's doing four?
I'll take four, it's the same issues. Yeah, you're gonna figure out the whole side of it, you know, because we've been putting that in, you know, as part of the city, we need to right, figure out exactly.
All right, so with that, um, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Seth?